All over the regular session of the town council, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no public hearings, public comment. Go right ahead.
I'd like to introduce Andrea Wishart. She is the new or not as new director of the senior center. And just wanted to take a moment to introduce her to you guys and let you know that she'll probably be out and about presenting what we're doing over at the senior center. I'm a board at the senior center, or a member at the senior center now, so kind of some of the improvements we're wanting to do and some of the programs we're recommending over there, so.
Good deal. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? Put you on the spot, we might as well do that.
Well.
No, you don't have to.
Actually, we have a fundraising campaign that's starting in April that we're really excited about. And we're raising funds for a new Meals on Wheels vehicle. So you might see some advertising about that starting this sixth of April. So we're really excited and the community can get behind that project.
Some of us probably have invested interest in that.
Thank you. Thanks for the introduction.
Welcome.
Anybody else, Frank, you have anything tonight? You're pretty quiet.
Thank you. Sid, Steve was here. I was just going to say, is there anything new or exciting with regards to Warner?
No, things are going well. We're kind of challenged with correctional officer vacancies right now. We had five and we hired two people. One's moved from Colorado over the first week of April. We have three vacancies currently and nobody to interview. So it's kind of puzzling to us. So you're probably going to see some recruiting opportunities on a quarterly basis. We're thinking about having an open house out of the facility and make it available for tours. Probably going to try to do something at the school job fair maybe, even though you can't apply until you're 21 as a correctional officers. We've had several people come back that have graduated from Lakeview actually looking at recruitment currently. So get that word out there and maybe go and plan to do some recruiting opportunities over there. But I, we don't really know why. We don't have anybody to interview. We haven't had that issue before. So there is a new process, the DPSST, I can't remember if that stands for the state agency that certifies law enforcement officers.
Or the standards, or the three standards, I think.
Yes.
That's the one.
That's the one. All public safety officers have to, to apply for a position, have to take a test. And there's a firm called NTN that the Department of Corrections is contracted with. So before you can even apply for a correctional officer position, you have to go and take a test to test you on reading, writing, adding and subtracting. And then there's some scenario based questions. You watch the video. Sometimes stand up and take a test and you have to make a summary of what you saw, test people's observation skills. And unfortunately, that test is only provided in Bend, Pendleton, and I think Boise. And they tried to have a test opportunity in Salem and nobody came for that. So it's a challenge. I have talked to KCC. Their personnel over there said that they are willing to procure the test. So we're hoping that people can take the test right here in Lakeview.
That'd be great.
Other than that, things are going well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Communications and comments. We have one letter from the governor, our new governor, Kate Brown. Guys have a chance to read that. There was one correction in there, I guess, did I write it?
I pointed out a small error. It was just the spell check didn't catch it.
Well, you guys are certainly welcome to stay, but you don't feel that you have to, okay? We'll go ahead and move into the police report. Chief Kemp, do you have anything to add? I have a question. On, on your report, we had a couple of instances, I think, of vandalism. Is that tagging type stuff or is it something else?
Just property damage, not necessarily tagging. It all would fall under the same quote.
And then I heard in your conversation, I had a question about light duty for Officer Grindel, but you answered that before the meeting, so that's good. Anybody else? Mr. Redley, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I spent a lot of Jeff's money.
You spent a lot?
A lot of Jeff's money. A whole new computer suite is coming for the PD and administrative part. The computers are not compatible with the new operating systems that are out. So we did the bullet and bought all the computers. They no longer be supported and they're slower than, well.
Yes, everybody.
If they were. They run around to different computers just to see if they can get on. So anyway, so we should have six new computers coming. Our server for 911 should be online probably next week. And everything we have should be compliant and operated at full speed.
Must have been, talk to everything.
I think most of that had to do with the fading out of XP. So when the administrators of the program decided to improve theirs, they kind of forced us into having to spend money to keep up just to make it work, so.
And there's no more updates coming in to fix problems. And we hear that they're supposed to, I think every three years, come out with a different operating system. But we have to go with what our cad manager has, which is Windows 7. And none of the information will be stored on the computers. It'll be all stored on our main servers. So we won't be eating up any memory for our computers. They shouldn't be whiz bang.
We ran into that the first go around. We had to upgrade the amount of RAM and all the desktops to be able to function. Now the server's going to take care of that. So it shouldn't cost us more money until they upgrade again.
Do you, I don't know if you know, sure maybe through Marsha, but for some reason, I believe I've heard recently, it would likely within the last two or three months that, that the seven, the Windows 7 operating system, that they do intend to continue to upgrade and maintain support Windows 7 for the foreseeable future is what I understand.
That's what we, we hope. And if they change a different operating system and we have to buy the license, send it over to Marsha's and have Chad take everything off. We should be in good shape. But to answer your question, Ray, I'm going to.
Sometimes it's better that way.
Invite your old friend.
That's right, yeah. Talk to Marsha. She tells me what we're having for dinner and what time I have to get up in the morning.
Somebody here for prior report.
I would, just, you know, some of you may have seen it or been aware of it, where they did have a small burn to learn. It wasn't much of an exercise at the Lakeview lumber products, or Lakeview lumber mill site. There was a whole mobile home back on the backside that was stored there for another year. Was burned up over the weekend and it's been away from there. Going to haul the metal away this week sometime.
Raspberry, was that you, Ron, that did that down by the.
She was.
On purpose, I'm sorry.
Get rid of the dust.
Ron, you have anything to add to yours?
We've got the geothermal up and going again up north end. We had quite a few problems this past month.
Would you like to comment? Just to say thanks to Ron and this crew for being that repair. It costs us about $600 to $700 a day to run propane to our boilers. So really appreciate the, the speediness they're getting that repaired.
We didn't have any local pump. We had it full of pumps. We had to get somebody out of town. They were two, three days before the beginning. We got here as quick as I could and turned it on, so.
And then we delayed turning our system on for a couple of days. I can't remember what you guys actually had.
We had to heat the system back up and then when we got the well back online, we had a leak in the pump line. We had to dig up the road and replace this section of the ring, so.
Bottom line, you're really glad to see it run.
At least it wasn't ten below zero in jail.
That would have been a lot worse.
Five thousand instead of six hundred.
That's right.
With daily bills like that, I'm sure it wouldn't make you wake up right past noon. Geothermals is a little worth it.
Yes.
Ray, you have anything to add to your report?
I don't believe so.
We'll go ahead and move into the consent calendar. I got a couple of things, Amy. On first page, it says, Mayor Mike Patrick called the regular council meeting to order. Should be the work session. And then the new business.
Say what? Say what?
Sorry. I apologize for that, I guess.
Amy, I need you to, once again.
Yes.
Do I need to tell you again?
You're good to go.
I just wanted to make sure that Steve knew. We're doing adjustments on liaison boards. And we had brought up comments on, again, it was in the meeting minutes. I noticed you looking at those. At the end of it, I felt kind of guilty because it says that you no longer were sending me emails of the liaison appointment to your committee. But that's not what I made the comment in the meeting. What it was is the mayor had asked me to put on your mailing list. And so y'all had put him on the mailing list as well. But I think at one time, your previous, I'm trying to think.
Rebecca.
Rebecca had sent out a directory of the members and it had the mayor instead of myself. So I just wanted to let you know that you weren't lacking in sending out.
I'll make sure that's, check for Sharon just to make sure. You are getting notices though?
Yeah, I have been. And I, there may be some changes today, Steve. Like I said, we're, we're realizing.
If we make changes tonight on assignments, we're going to send a letter to each organization on who liaison is and their contact information.
Great. I appreciate you participating, Pat.
Amy, I have one other thing and it's just, it says in there that Scott Utley announced that Lakeview lost Lieutenant Joseph Langdale. It wasn't Lakeview, the nation lost Lieutenant Joseph Langdale. And he was a world survivor of World War II and the last remaining officer from the USS Arizona.
Where are you?
It's on page two of the.
Regular.
Regular council meetings. Anyway, just, just to clarify that, it wasn't a Lakeview citizen, but just the nation lost a hero period. And other than that, I don't have it. Oh, I'd like to remove item C from the first vote on approving the council because I was not there. So just the members that were there can vote on it. And so rather than doing this whole thing, then we'll do a second vote on item C in this agenda, so. I'd accept the motion to approve.
Well, I had.
Oh, you have some changes? I'm sorry.
Yeah, a correction on page three of that. February 10th meeting and down on the bottom where the paragraph starts with Ray Sims informed. And then at the very end of the paragraph, it says, burn wood on yellow or red days, which are few, which isn't correct.
I bet that should be which are few.
Which are few, or which, of which there were only a few or something.
On page three, you said?
It's on page three.
Okay, on the very end there.
Yeah.
Oh, which AFE, which are few.
And then on the next page, very at the top, where Scott Utley informed the council that dispatch has a new servers in place. And it was quite, it should be quite, but it quit. Couple of little minor things.
That's it? Any other cases?
Quit making fun of the governors. Spell check.
That was, that was it.
And I guess since we're going to be nitpicky, Amy, I'll go back to one I saw here. I, I, I have to find it again. It was in regards to the Green Dot Program on page two. I don't think that's the name of it, but that's what Jan had mentioned the program was. But I don't want to exclude anyone from coming to our community that is of that size. I think they can still come to Lakeview and Lake County. I, I think it's available to larger corporations, but I.
Okay. Okay. And I think that's all the corrections, so I would accept the motion to approve the consent calendar minus item C. With corrections, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I move we approve the consent calendar items A, B, D, and E with corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion or a second to approve consent calendar items A, B, D, and E with corrections. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimous with those that were present. And I now need a motion to approve the February 18th, 2015. Actually, I did that backwards, didn't I, folks? I should have been on the first one. I could vote on it. But anyway, this one here is of the four of you that were there for the special meeting. Quit laughing at me. Okay, anyway, I need a motion to approve the February 18th special meeting minutes.
Item C. I move we approve item C of the consent calendar. Did I have corrections?
That doesn't have corrections. Okay, is there a second? Have a motion or a second to approve item C on the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by those that were present. Okay. I don't know why I'm having such a hard time tonight. I apologize.
But puppy keeping you awake on.
It must be. I, I'll blame it on that. Okay, mayor council update. I attended the Red Rock Biofuel's presentation. It was last Monday night. Several of the council and Mr. Sims, I know was there also, but just my notes. I thought it was very well attended. Overall, I thought there was a very positive attitude by the citizens. And there was good questions and good answers. The guy didn't avoid any answers at all. He was very upfront with his answers and if he didn't have them, he promised he'd even get them. So overall, it was a great meeting. Last night, I attended the presentation by Sherry Stewart from the governor's office on the Main Street presentation, it was called. She was pretty informative, but I hope something comes out of this, you know, towards her town. I'm not exactly sure what. But there was a decent crowd in there. I'd like to have seen a few more business owners, you know, merchants or whatever. But it was still a pretty good meeting and that's all that I've done this last two weeks, so Sandy?
Well, I attended the Red Rock meeting also and I agree with what the mayor said. It was well presented and well attended. However, I, they didn't have a lot of food before I got there. Other than that, it was very good. Very informative. I appreciated what they had to say and a lot of the good questions, like you said.
Sharon?
I attended chamber board on Thursday of last week. They're going through their budget process and working at that. It's, I think we have one vacancy if anybody would like to join the chamber on the, on the board. Seems to be going very well gearing up for Irish Days this weekend, which the dinner and the festivities on the Main Street and that sort of thing. So they're working pretty hard on that. And seemed to have a pretty good handle on the whole parade. I want to thank the council for their, I guess, patience with me. I did get a clean bill of health today and I am relatively pneumonia free, which has been a struggle.
That's it? Ditto. Michael?
I too went to Red Rock and say ditto to all of us set. I also went to the AG advisory committee looking to, we had presentations by three people from the FFA going for their certifications in something that I can't remember. I'm sorry. Pardon me?
State Farm cleared.
Yeah, I guess maybe that was it. Thank you. And anyway, they did a nice job. It was interesting to listen to those young people. And then also looking at what they're planning to do for the next year as far as their programs. And still working on the paint, paint booth that they've had for a few years, trying to still get that taken care of. Even talking about the possibility of piping some of the geothermal energy of their cube, keep it at proper temperatures so that they can paint and use the paint.
Okay, Mike?
The work session, I'm sorry, the, the Main Street, I don't know if it was a work session or whatever. The presentation that was made last night, I attended that. And as the mayor pointed out, it was something that was, something that was pointed out in our community of things that can be done. But that's going to take effort on behalf of our community members. And so I would just say to anyone who would like to get involved, there's room for your involvement. And they need some people to step in and help out if at all possible. So I think it could be good for our community. It's a longer term thing. I think that economic development, the initial meeting was more so on, we need things happening now in our community to revive it. And so maybe just the efforts all around and it'll complement it later on down the line also.
Ray?
Yeah, I attended Main Street and Red Rock. And of course, I've been involved as Mike has with some of the Red Rock sessions. So we've heard quite a bit of that, but I thought it was a really good opportunity. It might have been nice to have had this a month ago or so, you know, the information out there. But Red Rock felt it was appropriate at this time to, to, you know, make, make the public aware of what their plans are. You know, I think it's a good thing for us to bring some employment to town, create some opportunity for some health force management for self related purposes. And, you know, we need, we need some positive things to add on here. That'll make, you know, the Main Street things and revitalization of downtown short term with some construction employment in town will be helpful as well as transitioning into some long-term employment because of the, of the project. I also want to remind folks that Thursday night this week, the DEQ will be having an informational meeting in the VIP Memorial Hall at six o'clock on the air quality permitting process for Red Rock. This won't be a meeting where they'll be taking testimony on a permit. This will be an informational meeting about what the process will be and how people can get involved. And there'll be some background information there. The permit application has been submitted to DEQ, so they have it, but they have not scheduled the actual hearings and so forth yet, so.
Thursday at six?
Six o'clock in Memorial Hall Thursday, yes. Also, as was already pointed out, Sharon, the St. Patrick's festivities, parade, all that stuff this Friday evening is the dinner at the Elks. Saturday is the parade and other festivities downtown.
Significantly, the pub crawl Saturday night from the Elks, so.
And I hear it's not supposed to snow, so that's a.
I also just wanted to, because I know it wasn't on the, you know, not recording during the work session, I don't think, but we had a nice presentation brief, but very informative presentation from Josh Flatter-Yohann. Josh recently earned his Eagle Scout badge here in Lakeview with the Boy Scouts. And Josh worked with the town. I think he's the third one in the last eight or 10 years that we have worked with to provide a project where we provide some materials and they provide the labor and the organizational skills to, in his case, he redid all of the equipment, painted, shipped, weed control and so forth at Seropimus Park. So anyway, nice young man, did a, did a nice job with his presentation to us and did some really nice work for us, so. Appreciate that and look forward to future opportunities to work with Boy Scouts for Eagle Scout badges. That's it?
Thank you. Thank for mentioning Josh too. That, that was a nice presentation by that young man, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into old business. It's liaison appointments. We had a work session this evening at three o'clock and discussed assignments, which I'll, I'll make official in just a minute. But Sharon, part of our discussion, here the, the Chamber of Commerce liaison at this time and you're also on the board. Are you a board member because of your liaison?
I am not officially a voting member.
You're not a voting member?
And shouldn't be one of the workforce, but that doesn't quite work out, so. I think I should just, you know, bring information and take things back, but.
Mike shows a wasted interest on being the liaison to the chamber. Are you happy with it? Do you want to keep it? Do you have, you know, is it locked solid in your heart as something you dearly love?
You could say that.
Like I said, Mayor, I didn't.
I have a lot.
It was brought up the last, it was brought up the last, what it was, Sharon, is Ray had brought up you served as a board member. And that was the only thing is if you were on the board as a board member, that was.
I think, I. I think if you're warm and breathing and attending meetings, they'll, they'll be more than happy to have you. And one of the nice things, they, I didn't say this during my little presentation there, but they're really working to get the merchants involved. It's sort of a, the merchant committee never works very well, or at least for very long. If you have a dynamic leader, like we had Barb Lee there for a couple of years, it was very strong. And then she gets tired and nobody's cooperating or whatever and it falls apart. What they're doing on E Street with Beeson and Sheila from Holloway's, I think, I mean, they've even got neat little St. Patrick Day things in there. And, you know, and they work real hard up there, but I know that some, when they had a merchant committee, many of the business owners sent one of their employees to go, well, that's not going to work. And it didn't. So I think it would be real interesting if you wanted to serve especially since you could be a representative from the merchants, from the business owners. You might want, you might want to talk about that. But if you want it, I can have lunch somewhere else Thursdays. But I'm, I'm such a lightweight now on this list, so, but it's up to you.
No, Sharon, go ahead and keep it. And I just, you know, if, if you were in fact, like it was explained, is you were on the chamber board as a voting member of that. And I felt like then we need somebody as a.
To represent.
A representative of the town as a liaison. But if you're serving as that in which way it's structured, I have no problem with that. You're there and.
Like I said, warm and breathing, that's about all it takes.
Okay, well, so what I'm going to do is go through and read liaison assignments for the year with Sandy. It'll be, she's council president, planning commission, police, Lake County Public Safety, the safety committee, that's the towns committee, Saturday Market, and the PAC, which is the prison advisory council, okay? Myself, I'm air quality, finance. I've been assigned fire and the Christmas committee. Sharon Faulkner will be the swimming pool, railroad, the Chamber of Commerce slash board, and you pick. Michael Hughes, labor negotiations, shooting range, public works, AG farm, stewardship group, and the airport advisory. Mike Warren will be community development, the long-term enterprise zone, 911 slash IGC, Lake County Emergency Management and the Chamber, no, and that's it.
Chambers.
Mayor, if I, if I might comment, since, since the board that I, I feel guilty with Steve sitting here, I want to tell him, Steve, I enjoyed serving for the many years with, with, with you and the previous prison superintendents. And I think it's great that we have representation on the liaison to the prison advisory committee. And what brought up is my desires to change and better fit our council for different positions on those liaison representations. And I think Sandy is a little better fit for the prison advisory committee than me. I, I don't know that much about you. I've learned a lot through your meetings and I appreciate that. And it's better to have that understanding for me as a council member, I promise you. But I think that Sandy and her background is a better fit for what goes on in the prison advisory committee and your functions, so. But I, it was not because I didn't want to be on your committee.
Appreciate your participation. Look forward to having Sandy. I hope she's been great.
I need to know what to do to get in.
Well.
Bless the things.
Which is why you can't get people to work.
Wear your blue jeans.
They need to be in there.
No, that, that.
Getting out, it's a hard one.
Okay, I'm losing control of my passion. Okay, that leaves Ray. Your assignments are town manager, the ACT Economic Development District. That's SCOR, is that what you said?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then the South Central Oregon Partnership, and I don't know the acronym for that, but.
SCOR, I was, it's SCOR.
SCOR, okay. The Budget Officer Renewable Energy, and what was the partnership?
That's, that's part of the renewable energy.
Oh, Renewable Energy Partnership. So those are now our liaison, liaison assignments for the year. Amy, if you would give a letter to each of those organizations and let them know who the town representative is, and a, either a phone number or maybe a phone number and an email both.
Certainly.
Okay. Counsel, appreciate you for stepping up and doing these. And that said, we'll go ahead and move into new business, which is, are we still on the new business? I mean, are we still?
No, but, well, there will not be an I have a new business, but I would like to have executive session just to brief you briefly on why there's not a new business there.
Okay.
Brief you briefly, is that okay?
That said, there being no further business for the council, at this time, we will adjourn from regular session and go into executive session under ORS 192.660 parentheses two parentheses H litigation. At that time, I have to ask everyone to please, please leave. Thank you for attending.